Okay, I think so. All right. We're going to jump right in because we have a lot to cover tonight. You know, before I ask for any public participation, you know, the one thing I wanted to say is, you know, tonight our focus is reviewing and approving the reentry plans. And I guess I can't stress enough how unprecedented this is, how much time and energy it's taking from folks, particularly, you know, administration. You know, I keep thinking to myself, a lot of times when you're tasked with doing something, you get the advice to, you know, don't recreate the wheel. And we are absolutely recreating the wheel here. We are redefining the entire infrastructure for how we deliver education. And I just, you know, particularly anybody from the public who's, you know, listening and participating tonight, administration, the teachers, the working group, everybody is tasked with something that is just astronomically different and difficult, time-consuming, with so many factors to bake into it. So as we begin to look at and talk about the reentry plans, let's remember how this is such new territory and, you know, look through and approach it with the caveat that nobody's done this before. So let's work together and get through this together. Having said all that, I will ask if there's anybody from the public who would like to say anything before I hand it over to Jill. And John, I do say that you, I do see you would like to say something. So John Lay, feel free.
Thank you very much. You know, first of all, I just want to say, I agree, the administration is being tasked with a huge job here, and we appreciate all the work that they're doing to try to get these plans in order. This is certainly, you know, not something we've had to do before. But I'm not sure if members of the school committee and the public had a chance to see Dr. Fauci's interview with the American Federation of Future Presidents, Randy Weingarten. He made an interesting observation that I think would be important to consider. He said, quote, "In many respects, unfortunately, though, this may sound a little scary and harsh, I don't mean it to be that way, is that you're going to actually be part of the experiment of the learning curve of what we need to know. Because remember, early on, when we shut down the country, as it were, the schools were shut down. So we don't know the full impact, we don't have the total database of knowing what there is to expect," end quote. You know, we all want to be back in the classroom, but it has to be safe for our students and staff. So when the nation's top infectious disease expert says that our kids will be part of the experiment, that makes me cautious, to say the least. For the safety of our students and staff, I urge the school committee to consider reopening in a full remote model in the fall until we have enough information to know we can have a safe opening in person. A phased-in approach, starting with a remote, moving to hybrid, and then full in-person is the best way to ensure that safety. At the last school committee meeting, we didn't have a consensus, ASLEA, of which method we preferred, but we have that consensus now. Of 114 faculty and staff that replied to our survey, 83 want to push for a full remote start to the year. Now, many parents and school committee members raise concerns about remote instruction, and we absolutely agree that the best way to instruct our students is in-person. But some of why remote learning wasn't more effective was due to a lack of time for repair and the fact that there were no scheduled class times and students were required to attend remotely. Now that DESI has agreed to give us two weeks to prepare for the fall, we're ready, willing, and able to spend the time to make remote learning work. We do adopt remote learning for the start of the year. I can assure you, it will be very different than how it worked in the spring. And remember, this is only temporary. As soon as it's safe, we would support a phased-in return to school. We agree that the district needs to have plans for each part of the reopening. And again, I thank Dr. Prue for including several of our members in the working group that gave feedback on the plans being presented tonight. So I'm not raising an issue about the plans that are being discussed and, you know, suggesting we shouldn't be presenting these to the state. But when it becomes time for the school committee to decide how to begin the school year, we need to start in a safe way, and the only safe way at this time is full remote. If other districts choose to open in-person, then they can provide the data that Dr. Fauci says we don't have without risking the health and safety of our students and staff. Thank you for your consideration.
All righty. Well, thank you for that information in the teacher's point of view, John. Certainly, there's a lot of factors that will come into play. And tonight, we, as you indicated, are not making the decision of how to reopen. We're going to review and we're going to approve the draft first round of reentry plans. But there's a lot more discussion to come. Thank you. Anybody else from the public before I turn it over to our superintendent? Okay. Anybody from the school committee want to say anything before we jump right in? There'll be plenty of time for comments and questions as Jill presents. Okay, with that?
Public comments.
Oh, good and sure.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that worked on the task force and thank you to the administration and all much time and effort that they put in. And it definitely wasn't expected, and hopefully we'll have some downtime for them shortly before we start the school year.
Yeah. I couldn't agree more with that. Thank you. Okay, Jill, I will let you take the reins.
Sure, thank you, and I appreciate the support and help that we have received along the way from our staff, from our community, and even our students, who have played a role in helping to inform how we might be able to approach school in the fall. And regardless of how we enter school in the fall, school will be different. And so we acknowledge that because of the types of measures that we will need to put in place to make sure that our students and staff are safe and that we provide them with the most effective learning strategies as possible as the situation dictates. So we're going to begin tonight with the Silver Lake survey results. And what I'm going to ask is I'm going to present to you, I don't know that I'll be able to see your questions as I present, so if possible, if I could try to take questions at the end, that way there I can focus on the questions themselves. And then I will, after we discuss the survey data, will then talk about the different, the three different potential plans for reentry and the connection between the three and how all of that came to be. So the first thing I'm going to do is share with you my presentation. And can you see that?
Not yet, Jill.
How about now?
It's loading.
Is it still loading?
We got it.
Great, okay. So a survey was sent out to all parents and staff, and it closed on Wednesday of last week at 12:30. We then provided a general statistical overview to the working group. We did not sort out the data by school at that time because there wasn't enough time to do the filtering. And so what we've done for each school committee is we have filtered out for your presentation the data that relates directly to your community. In this case, it's the Silver Lake community, meaning we're looking at the responses from either Silver Lake staff or Silver Lake parents. So in this first part, we're going to talk about the parent responses and in terms of what schools will students attend in the fall, and it's by, obviously, the majority of students are attending either the middle or high school. But what's interesting is that, what I'd also like you to note is that we have students in the other schools as well. So one of the things to consider in planning and trying to create continuity of experience is that some of our families are sending their children to more than one school throughout our towns. And therefore, to the greatest degree possible, if we could provide some consistency in scheduling, I'm sure that's something that families would be appreciative of. Which grades will your students attend in the fall? This is just to show you that we had responses from everywhere, from pre-K through 12 and beyond.
Jill, can you make the screen bigger for us at all?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Is that better? Okay. I think there's a little delay, I'm sorry. Okay, do you currently plan to send your students to school in the fall? At the time of this survey, and this is a non-binding survey, and we didn't have a lot of information to provide parents because we were in the process of still receiving guidance from the state and working on a plan. Nonetheless, parents at this time said yes. 61% said yes based upon the current circumstances. 7% said no based upon the current circumstances. And 31%, a little over 31%, I'm rounding, said undecided. I also wanted to take the data and split it out by schools to show you if there was any significances or differences between the two schools. And then here, it's, there's very little differences between the two schools, with most of the parents responding yes. Perhaps a little, a few more parents undecided at the middle school. In terms of whether or not they plan to send their students to school in the fall, how do you plan to send them? The majority of the students would take, I'm sorry, the majority of students would drive or be driven to school. 45% would take the bus, and 1.96% would walk, bike, et cetera. Again, not a huge difference between the two schools, obviously more drivers at the high school. How many of your students would take the bus under the current circumstances? Here you can see the breakdown of number of students per family. The reason why this slide is significant is it may be able to help us with seating on the bus. Under current regulations, students cannot sit together on the bus unless they belong to the same family. If given the choice regarding schooling next year, under what current, under the current circumstances, what would you choose for your students? And admittedly, this breaks down the data a little bit more deliberately in terms of whether or not it was three feet distancing, or if they chose a model of partially in-school, partially remote, in order for us to obtain six feet distancing. And you can see the breakdown between the different six-feet-distancing potential models. 10%, over 10% preferred online learning. And then another 4% chose other, with the majority of those comments being questions or indecision regarding what the choices are. We again broke it down by school, and here you can see there's very little difference between the percentages at the two schools, with a little more preference for online learning in that category at the middle school. The concerns from parents ranged, there was a wide range, and this is just our best effort at trying to summarize some of that qualitative data. There was concern for health risks, also noting the difficulty of adhering to safety protocols and the need for everyone to take those safety protocols seriously. There was also concerns regarding the difficulty of students wearing a mask for that many hours a day. There was concerns regarding what the cleaning protocols would be and what chemicals would be, what would be used. In terms of remote, there are similar concerns as we've had in the past, in terms of making sure that remote is more robust. There was also concern especially about students' sense of isolation. There were concerns reflecting, concern for the quality of special education support in a remote environment where some of those students required in-person services. And certainly the concern regarding loss of academic content or lack of instruction, in particular regarding remote instruction. Ideas ranged from asking us to be realistic with our expectations, trying to find balance in whatever model we choose, providing a regular schedule or routine for students, more instruction and professional development to help our instructional staff teach more effectively online, and the potential use of outdoor spaces when possible. So the second survey reflects the staff's responses. As of Friday, July 24th, it closed on the Wednesday. So this filtering actually occurred on Friday, July 24th. So again, I don't, I'm not discounting the survey that was conducted by the ASLEA. This is the survey we received at that time. This is the data that we have. So the majority of respondents were from the high school, at 67%, and 32% of the respondents were at the middle school. The majority of respondents were teachers. When we asked staff if they currently plan to return to school in the fall if school is offered in-person, 60 teachers said yes based upon the current circumstances, 38 of our teachers said undecided, and six of our teachers said no based upon the current We broke that down again by school just to see if there were any significant differences between the schools, and this slide highlights the idea that more of the high school staff was in fact undecided. When you, when we asked the staff what their preferred model was for the fall, 45 or 47 of our respondents said remote. 25% or 27 of our staff said in-person, and 20, over 28% said hybrid. We again broke that down by school, with slightly more people at the high school preferring in-person than the middle school. And slightly more teachers at the middle school preferring hybrid than the high school. But not a huge variation. So again, here's just a breakdown of the different preferred learning models. At three feet distancing, we only had 14%. For this remote learning, you can see here was at 38, over 38%. And then the in-person at six feet was divided among those categories that you see from blue to orange on the screen. So again, we broke down the data by school just to see if there were any significant differences between the two, and you can see some slight differences in certain categories. But overall, there aren't extreme differences between the staff preferences and schools. We asked the staff what their greatest concerns were regarding in-person learning for the fall, and their number-one concern were safety protocols. Their second-greatest concern was ways to socially and emotionally support their students. This is just how that data was derived, because it was a rating scale, and that's there for your review. We also asked our educators what are their greatest concerns regarding online learning. And their number-one concern was how to effectively teach online. And number-two was once again, how to support their students socially and emotionally. Here again is the data behind that rating scale. The concerns and recommendations from the staff focused primarily along three different categories. The need for safety, the frustration over the changing information and guidance, especially with respect to receiving guidance as we are creating a plan. And then the training and professional development, whether it be how to teach effectively online, training for particular tools, the request for particular tools that may be more effective with online learning, social-emotional learning resources, and making sure that we have clear safety procedures and protocols that are adhered to by our students and staff. So now I will stop presenting and answer any questions that you may have regarding the data. Please keeping in mind that we have yet to present the different models that may answer some of your other questions. So I'm asking that. Questions related to data come first so that we can move on to the next portion in terms of how this data and other feedback has helped to shape the plan. And we also have Assistant Superintendent Lynch, our business director, Kristi McNeely, our building principals are here tonight as well to help lend voices to the different issues and concerns. And in addition, I believe that Marie Grable will be here to answer questions regarding special education. So we're happy to try to answer any questions you may have, but again, I'd like to take questions related to survey data first.
So the easiest way to do that might be to put something out in the chat, and I'll recognize you perhaps. And if there are no data-related questions, we can certainly move right into the presentation.
I have a question. Could you please go back a few slides to show the percentages of the educators that are looking at remote, three feet, six feet? I just want to add up the percentages of those that are in favor of some sort of onsite learning, because you mentioned 38% was the number of educators that did not want to go onsite but wanted to be remote. So I just want to see how those other three numbers added up.
And we will also be posting this presentation as well. I think this is the slide you were looking for. Can you see that?
Yes, thank you. So when I look at this, it looks like about 38% also support some sort of in-person learning. So you have, it's about even, right? You have 14, 16, and 8% together, plus the eight there and the eight again, and then 38% are remote. So actually, they're in the minority. So that's just what I wanted to take a look at. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing another Jill, do you want to move on?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So next, I'm going to share with you our reentry proposal presentation. Can everyone see the reentry proposal slide?
Yes.
So the first thing I wanted to begin by talking about is that the Department of Education has given us some, a timeline and some requirements of what we must submit to them. On July 15th, the Department of Education released a two-step process to submit reopening plans for schools. The first part of that is due on July 31st. We are required to complete and submit a preliminary reopening plan to the Department of Education. This plan must be approved by the school committee. On August 10th, districts must finalize their comprehensive plan documents, submit them to the Department of Education, and release them publicly to their communities. Again, this plan must be supported and voted by the school committee. In addition, as part of these plans, certain aspects of the plans are subject to impact bargaining. What's interesting is that we received notice of the two-step process, I believe, around July 15th, it may have been the 10th, where we became aware that we needed to kick up our timeline to July 31st. And so originally, we had working group dates that were scheduled for later, anticipating that we would have the guidance, the late-July guidance that the Department of Education had promised before we went into our working group committees. That was not to be, and we moved up our working group committees, and we appreciate the flexibility of our committees who are still willing to serve under such a quick timeline. You notice that the reason why we were given the August 10th deadline for a more comprehensive plan is because the Department of Education itself recognized that they were going to be sending us an opportunity to incorporate any desired changes based on additional guidance that the department may release in July. And since then, even over the last week, we continue to receive information in part or in whole from the department. So for example, I think it was two days ago, we received news that the Department of Education was going to give districts 10 days to help staff prepare and train appropriately for the opening of school. So that, for example, is information that we received only two days ago. The Department of Education is requiring a full in-person learning with new safety requirements plan. The department is requiring a hybrid model of in-person and remote learning. And finally, they are requiring a remote learning plan. The reason being is that none of us right now know how we will be able to open school or if the circumstances could change at any point regardless of how we open school. So in order to ensure continuity, we want to make sure, and the state wants to make sure, that these three plans can work throughout the school year, even if our circumstances change as seamlessly as possible for the benefit of our students. How the school year will start has not been determined. School committees must approve the plans and may be subject to impact bargaining. We want you to note that although the time on learning requirement has changed to 170 days, we are still required to meet certain hours. And so that also influences what types of plans and how we can structure our day. So that's important to keep in mind. We are still responsible for those learning hours, even though it's lessened by the 170 days. But what the, what the department is expecting is full-day schooling. The guidance from Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education comes out, is coming out more regularly now. In June, we received the initial fall reopening guidance. We received a July 10th FAQ document that was released also to our families. On July 23rd, which was just last week, we had information regarding the expectations regarding facilities and transportation. And we also received updated information regarding courses requiring additional safety recommendations. So for a while, as we were trying to put together these plans, we didn't know what kind of extra precautions would need to be put in place for certain courses. And I've been using the example of wind instruments in bands, for example, or chorus, where there will be additional things that would have to be put in place in order for those things to occur in-person. It also shaped our perception of what courses might be safer to offer online. So that's something to keep in mind when we get to other aspects of this plan. In order to help inform our plans, not only did we work with our building leadership and district leadership, we formed two groups. We formed a secondary working group, and we formed an elementary working group because we knew developmentally there would be differences. We also wanted to keep the working group numbers manageable because it is difficult to get a lot done if you, if the size becomes unmanageable, especially in a remote environment. And we learned that from our own survey data regarding feedback in terms of the effectiveness of small groups versus large groups. It included input from educators, nurses, counselors, association leadership, parents, and students. And we thanked them for their honesty and their willingness to think outside the box. Our secondary working group was fortunate enough to have two students who were willing to contribute to those discussions. Our plan also reflects parent and caregiver Our plan also reflects parent and caregiver feedback, staff feedback, and even grade seven through 12 student feedback that was gathered through our surveys taken in April and June, and then more recently in July. This slide is what guided our practice. We wanted to meet the learning and developmental needs of our students. We prioritize the safe return of as many students as possible to in-school settings. That was our charge, and we kept that frame in mind as we did our work. We want to ensure that our staff are as safe as possible and prepared to support our students. We recognize that our practices would not look the same because of the pandemic, but we began our discussions on ways that we could preserve what makes school a special place: social relationships, connections to staff, engaging coursework, individualized activity. These are things that we will continue to focus on because we know that they are important to our students and our effectiveness. All three of our models, in-person, hybrid, and remote, must perform to high level to meet the learning needs of our students. All three models must follow a consistent schedule so that if we need to shift between models, students will have a consistent experience with their learning. We also recognize that regardless of whether or not we return in-person to school, we know that a strong remote learning plan is essential to ensure that learning will continue if students and staff are not able to attend in person. So our in-person learning emphasizes that there is no substitute for in-person instruction when it comes to the quality of students' learning. We also recognize that in-person learning plays an important role to support students' social, emotional needs and their mental and physical health. Our plan for in-person uses six feet of social distancing wherever possible and meets the department's three feet of social distancing where six feet is not possible. Our in-person model also recognizes that some staff and students may not be able to attend in-person for health and safety reasons. So regardless of what our opening plan or decision is, a remote option will be available for those students and staff who require a remote health and safety option. To the best of our ability, we would love to provide choice for everyone. And again, priority for teaching remotely would go to those educational staff members who had a health or safety reason for not being able to teach in-person if, in fact, we were teaching in-person. Safety protocols would include masks, appropriate ventilation, hand washing, classroom setup, lunch signage. And by signage, we mean not only on the walls and in bathrooms in a reminder sort of fashion, but also in terms of decals on our floors for spacing and things like that. We asked our building principals to go through, and they have done a wonderful job working with their staff, to go through our classrooms and determine how many students we can fit in each classroom at three feet or at six feet. And they have provided us with pictures of those tonight so that you can see visually what a classroom might look like and the difference between three feet and six feet. We also, when we looked at busing of a complete in-person learning model, we'll talk to you tonight about our busing issues. When we talk about a 77-passenger bus, it's going to be at one-third capacity. We have to have three feet distancing on the bus. Elementary schools are required to provide busing at two miles or more, and regional schools are required to provide transportation because of the regional reimbursement that we receive. For lunch, six feet distancing would be required. Regardless of whether or not it was safe to return at three feet, six feet is required for lunches because students must remove their masks to eat. So here's a picture of two Silver Lake classrooms. To the left is a more traditional picture of how many desks we would fit in a room. This is at three feet on the left with about 28 desks in a classroom. To the right is a classroom with six feet distancing, and you can fit about 15 students per classroom. So let's talk about busing because that is, we do receive some feedback from parents who are concerned, why not allow all students to return? Even if we could allow all students to return safely, which we don't have the spacing in classrooms to do that at six feet, even if we went to three feet distancing, we still have a busing issue. This is a 77-passenger bus with 32% capacity, with one student per bench alternating sides for each row. It represents the maximum school bus occupancy achievable while approximately three feet of physical distance. The reason why there's an asterisk at maximum is because siblings are allowed to sit together on the bus. So we looked into what would it take to add additional bus runs. And some things that needed to be taken into consideration is that currently Silver Lake and Superintendentcy Union 31 have 31 total shared buses for a student. Please keep in mind that if certain towns had their own independent buses, it would be even more expensive for them. So the shared busing helps us to save money. For double runs for the high school, meaning there would be two pickups in the morning and two drop-offs in the afternoon, that would be an additional $5,000 per day. For the first 90 school days, that means $450,000 in additional transportation funding. So one of the things we considered was asking parents to make a commitment as to whether or not they would take the bus or drop off those students, and asking parents to make that commitment at a semester at a time because this isn't something that we could quickly change from week to week. So we have talked about the possibility of seeking that kind of commitment so that we know exactly what we need in terms of buses and bus runs. The hybrid model, and there are strengths and weaknesses to every model that we present tonight, and we recognize that none of this is ideal. And we also recognize that none of us expected to be in this position that we are in today. The hybrid model is a combination of in-person and remote learning. The benefits of the hybrid model is it allows us to seat students six feet apart in the classroom. We have asked the principals to consider conducting core requirements in person to the best of their ability, recognizing the complexity of secondary schedules, emphasizing social, emotional connections with students, providing live instruction daily because regardless, students would be scheduled for either in-person or remote learning in this hybrid model on a daily basis. It would help us to maintain a variety of disciplines and interests for students. And that's important to our students. Cohorts. There are two major models that our schools have been considering: two days in person, whether it be alternating or consecutive, or alternating weeks. And what we mean by cohorts in this model, we actually have four different cohorts. The two main cohorts would be, half of our students would be assigned to Cohort A, and they would attend in-person on two days. The other half of our students would be assigned to Cohort B, and they would be assigned on the other two days of the week. Wednesday would be a remote learning day for all. And we would also have a cohort, a third cohort, which would be students who chose remote learning only. And then I'll also tell you something about a cohort called Cohort D, which will be our high-needs students who will be eligible for more in-person days. And I'll explain that to you in a moment. The hybrid recognizes a need for more structure and more consistency as well as accountability. So in this model, there would be attendance as well as grading. The high-needs priority, we would prioritize some student groups for full-time in-person instruction. This would be four days a week if, in fact, the student met the qualifier. So students with disabilities, English learners, pre-K students, and other students who are identified as high-needs. So one of the things that Marie Grable has been working on is identifying which students on IEPs would qualify because there is state expectations with regards to what students may qualify for this category. We have also asked our two EL teachers to help us to identify those English learners who are most in need of in-person learning. And then for our pre-K students, we are referring to our specialized program that is housed in Kingston Elementary School. And then there'd be opportunities for our leadership, if spacing allowed, within the classrooms at six feet in the hybrid model, to identify additional students who may qualify as high-needs. For example, some of our homeless students would qualify as high-needs. So I'm going to ask Ryan Lynch to talk to you a little bit more about the two models. I did my best to give you a verbal description, but we think sometimes it's better to give people a visual, and I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
Thank you, Jill. These are just the visuals that go along with the hybrid learning model one, as Jill just explained. So you'll notice when Jill talked about the four cohorts, those are represented on the left side with Cohort A attending in-person on Mondays and Tuesdays, and then having remote days for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then Cohort B in-person on Thursday and Friday, and having remote learning Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Cohort C again is the students and families who've elected for a full remote experience. And Cohort D would be students attending in-person four days per week. While Jill was speaking about our high-needs group, there was a question about would a student with a 504 qualify or be considered for the Cohort D? And a student would be considered based, not just because they had a 504, but based on the level of need. So that would be considered inside of Cohort D too, just to identify that question on the fly. So that's the, those are the four cohorts. And we also, in the working group, we spent time comparing the two days per week, represented on the left, with hybrid learning model two, which is represented on the right, which is a week-in, week-remote model. And I think, so you see that represented on the right. So Cohort A would attend four times during the first week, but then be full remote the next week. Some of the considerations that, you know, point us toward the every-week model would be consistency for families in terms of always, you know, knowing that their students would be in two days a week for a majority of families. Some, it would be four days a week. The Wednesday day would be an opportunity to provide a gap between cohorts, potentially do more cleaning and disinfecting with the hybrid learning model one. And it was very helpful to hear all the feedback in the working group. We felt like it was important to show you the two models that we, you know, addressed. I'm sure people would suggest, well, why not try three days for one cohort, two days for the other cohort? We just felt like, from an organizational and efficiency standpoint, that it would be extremely tricky for all families to keep track of that. And staff, we would never want to have students be, you know, confused about if it was a Cohort A day or Cohort B day. So we felt like Learning Model One offered a lot of consistency. All students in the same family would be, we would make every effort to place students in the same family or students at the same address in the same cohort for consistency for families. You could anticipate, however, obviously, that, given the unique circumstances of some families, that it's not guaranteed, just in terms of what if you had a Cohort A student and a Cohort D student? Or, you know, it's not 100%, but every effort would be made across the district to try to place students who live at the same address in the same family in the same cohort. So that's a little bit about the hybrid models and how we worked on them in the working groups.
The other thing I wanted to mention to each of you was the idea that Wednesday would give us an opportunity for additional cleaning that cannot take place while students are in the building. And it would also provide us with opportunities for collaboration and continued training for our teachers. Here is a possible student schedule in hybrid because we were asked what that may look like. So, and this is not guaranteed, but here's what we would strive to do. On an in-person day, your student would have math, ELA, science, social studies, world languages. On a remote day, we would do our best to schedule art, chorus, wellness, PE, for example, because those courses in particular too have more guidance with regards to safety procedures that have to be followed. We recognize that these disciplines are, there's no substitute for what these disciplines could do in person versus what we can do remotely. But in terms of the additional precautions that would have to be taken, we have asked our principals to begin looking at models that would put these types of disciplines on a remote day to the greatest extent possible, emphasizing core requirements in person. For remote learning, students follow a daily schedule, which will include daily periods with synchronous class meetings and periods with asynchronous or independent work. So synchronous class meetings, some of you are familiar with the platforms that we have used in the past. We're also continuing to look at other learning management systems that may help to make that experience more seamless or effective. Our remote learning will include a grading system, smaller breakout sessions, attendance tracking, regular communication with parents and guardians. We are looking into additional tools and training. And we are talking with our tech team, who has been great in terms of determining student privacy issues and the safety of certain online tools. We also look at for ease of use. And Ryan has been working with Melissa Farrell, our tech team, our coordinators, our department heads, and our principals to pull together not only vetted resources, but also to share best practices. So for our teachers, our experts who have really excelled on this platform, we're asking them to please share some of their best techniques and strategies and examples so that we can learn and grow together. Other things that we are going to need to consider and continue to work on. We met with our nurses today, and we have asked them to begin, based upon the guidance that we've received, to review the Department of Education guidance. They, so that they would review that guidance and also compare it with the Department of Health and make additional recommendations for us. They are working on and have been working on since the spring, health and safety training presentations, not only for staff, but helping us to figure out ways that we can present to our families and children as well that are developmentally appropriate. And talking about the power of presenting that information either live synchronously or through videos that could be shared with families prior to the student start for school. We need to begin to plan our technology and remote learning professional development. We have started discussing some of the issues related to impact bargaining with our teacher units. We are going to be looking for a bus commitment from families. And once we know what our plans are, we can ask families for that kind of commitment. We didn't feel like we could ask for an official commitment until we had an official plan. We didn't feel like we could ask for an official commitment until we had an official plan. We also want to ask our families if they're going to prefer remote, that they make a commitment for at least half a year, so that we can plan to address their needs if they change halfway through the year. We're also going to be looking at teacher commitment and what teachers need to teach remotely, and what our need is in the remote environment. Some of the guidance suggests that we should be considering bus monitors and additional routes. Those are budgetary issues that would need to be considered. We are looking at whether or not we need to have wider arrival and dismissal windows at schools, recognizing that if students are being dropped off, we could have much more traffic, and so what will that look like, and how can we do that safely? And what can we put in place to allow a wider window for drop-off? We are looking at daily substitutes and the possibility of daily substitutes, because again, if students are going to be coming into the building, we want to make sure that we have substitutes there, so that the learning can continue. We've also asked our principals to the best of their ability to place teachers on teams to support one another and to help one another if and when they are not able to be in school. Our next step is that once, we, our principals have begun looking at the feasibility of certain models. We don't mean to imply that the models that we presented tonight were the only models we considered. We considered many models, including half-day, for example, but we recognize the troubles we would run into, the loss of time just in terms of busing, and reverting to a remote schedule in between that travel time, and then being able to meet time on learning, for example. That's just some of the types of things that we worked through. We worked through the idea of maybe doing larger blocks of learning, but then that became also problematic. So, for example, if you had English only for the first half of the year, because it was going to be taught in larger blocks of time, that could be a problem when you go to take the SATs or an AP exam, for example. The typical problems that are related to, or the weaknesses inherent in block scheduling, not that there aren't some benefits to that schedule, but under the circumstances, in our discussions with the group, we had eliminated some of those ideas for certain things that we could not, we didn't think were feasible based upon our current resources. We met with our nurses today. As I mentioned, they're working on training. One of the things that we need to consider is staffing for nurses, and whether or not we are going to move forward with a nurse leader, and whether or not we are going to, what we are going to do with nurse subs. It can be very difficult to get a substitute nurse, and so these are the types of things we'll be discussing with our school committee, but obviously have budgetary implications. The school committee will need to approve a comprehensive plan before August 10th, and for us, that's a little more complicated, because we have four districts that have to approve before August 10th. So, that tightens our window even more. It means we need to begin, start presenting comprehensive plans as early as Monday. Our principals need to begin assigning cohorts and teaching assignments. We need to continue to purchase necessary safety supplies, signage, et cetera, and Matt Durkey has been doing an excellent job, working with our building staff and our principals, helping to provide ideas, but also helping them to secure necessary materials. He's also looking into the preparation of buildings, including HVAC and ventilation. Our plan is to share the detailed plan with the working group on Wednesday of next week. And we're going to continue to work with our nurses to design safety training for the staff. We will release another survey to collect commitments from staff and families as well, and so we may do a survey and a form, but at the very least, you should expect to see probably a briefer survey and more of a yes/no types of questions, but we feel that it may be necessary to survey and not just ask for the collection of certain types of forms. So, we're going to be working with our principals on that this week. So, I am going to, I think, I'm going to leave the slides up in the event that someone wants me to go back to a particular slide, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions. And we have our building principals here, and our special education director, and our building director also here, so please let us know, and I'm going to turn it over to the chair again.
Yeah. Thank you, Jill, and you did a wonderful job of sharing that, outlining the plans, and thank you, Brian, as well. What I'd like to do is, the SAFER Subcommittee met last night. I'm going to ask Chris just to give a little bit of highlight from that meeting, and then we'll begin to look at some of the questions that have begun popping up in the chat area. Chris, if you don't mind.
Sure, thank you. So, we went through these presentations last night on the Subcommittee, really with the lens of purely safety. The SAFER Committee is safety, facilities, fees, and revenue, but the safety component is what we were doing last night for a couple hours. Several met with most of the administration you see on the call today, to really figure out, you know, how the busing would work, you know? Can siblings fit on? Can we actually execute safely busing? Can we execute safely within the classrooms of teachers coming and going? Some of the conversations surrounded, obviously, the facilities with Matt Durkey, in terms of what he's going to do to clean the building? How is he going to clean it? How often can he clean it? What tools does he have? You know, I believe it's the electrostatic fogger, that is a primary tool that we'll be using in the fall. It uses chemicals that are high-grade and medical. So, that's as clean as we can get, I think. The issue with that comes along, you can't do it with people in the environment. So, that was sort of justified, I think, by building the schedule with a Wednesday with no students in the building, that would give us a greater opportunity to have custodial staff go through and do a full clean between a Cohort A and a Cohort B, using the same classrooms, for example. We discussed the idea of podding, and we talked about this with Jim and Michaela. If you have a pod in 7th grade, would we be able to have the teachers come to these 20 or 25 kids, or it might be in a classroom, might be 15 kids? So, that those 15 kids don't have to be shuffled and reshuffle the deck every class, like we do now, when they go from math to English to science? Because as we reshuffle the kids, we create more points of exposure, and we want to try and minimize that. I think that's part of the guidance we're getting. So, we're trying to see how to execute some of that. Scheduling-wise, it sounded like it wasn't going to be an easy task for the principals, but that is part of the safety mechanisms that we're trying to put in place, and we went over those sort of quite ad nauseam last night. Additionally, we really touched on just about every aspect you can think of. The busing was a big one, as I said, you know, would we have multiple entry points? Would we have staggered openings? I think we all kind of scratched our head at the cost of multiple bus routes, because we know our budget is under stress as it is, but if we need to figure it out, we need to figure it out. And that came back from the commitment, as Jill said, from parents for the semester to bring their kids, to have kids drive and get dropped off, so that we can hopefully not have to worry about a 77, or 71-capacity bus, but make it manageable on a single run, possibly. So, there are all these variations that are all up in the air when it comes to in-person learning, which is really the focus. You know, if we're doing the remote scenario, there's not much to worry about from us. It is, in some instances, getting the high-needs students in Cohort D what they need, you know? How do we get them safely to school if we only have, you know, 5% or 10% of the population needing to get to school? So, it was a great meeting. It was two hours long, as I said, and it was very in-depth. One thing I'll reiterate that Jill has said, is this information is coming, you know, on a regular basis, and if you have specific questions, by all means, ask us all. That's why we're here tonight, but it may also be helpful after this meeting to go to the DOE, Department of Education site, the DESI site, and look up some of these things. I know Ryan responded in the comments to one of the questions about what's the scenario if some student gets sick or a teacher gets sick? What's the quarantine, you know, rules? They're out there. I think there's a whole, whatever it is, 50-page document or so, that says, okay, here are 20 different scenarios of who gets sick and how to act, and if it's a positive test result or a negative test result. There's so much information. The surveys we did, I want to thank everyone that took the surveys personally. I know we ended up with 350 pages of parent comments to finger through and try and see what people thought about on the survey that were not, you know, an ABC answer. So, we are not, hopefully, we're not leaving any stones unturned as we make these plans from a safety perspective. I think now we've got to figure out, after tonight, and I think Jill drafted three great plans with her staff, you know, which one we as a community, we as Silver Lake, think is best for the students, best for the staff, and best for all of us. So, thank you there, Paula.
Yep. No, thank you, Chris. And again, just to clarify, tonight, we will not be making the decision on, you know, what path to go into initially, but certainly giving the stamp of approval to the initial plans being sent into DESI. I think I'm going to start with the first question, which was Gordon's over in the chat, and then when the chat stops producing questions, maybe the school committee can ask any questions they have out loud. But Gordon had put one out there, would the lower, the number of classes in each day, would we lower the number of classes in each day in increasing the time in each class?
You could. It would increase the number of offerings. I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback, but it would limit, you could increase the time, but you would limit your offerings, especially at the secondary level.
I just sort of messed up my chat order a bit here, so let me see. And Jill, if you see the next question, feel free to read it and go.
Okay.
Yeah. What is the plan if a teacher or a student, oh, that one was answered. I'm going to let Ryan's providing the website speak to that one, because it is sort of a detailed question. It's a detailed answer, rather. Would we ask the new LMS vendor to offer training to students on how to use any new technology? It would help the educators and parents?
Yes, if we were to adopt a new learning management system. So, Google is free right now. It may not always be free, and our tech team is continually looking at other potential platforms. At the elementary, for example, we have been looking at Schoology, because of its ability to help us communicate with students who don't have email addresses in a safe way, and be compliant with the safety measures that must be in place in order to protect children's privacy. So, yes, if we were to purchase a new learning management system, part of that purchase would be support and training on that new system. And I would anticipate that we would also need to help our students also learn how to access that students, that system, whether it be if they're in person, or if we have to provide other means of getting that information out remotely prior to the start of school.
Another one, with remote learning, will the teachers be in the classroom to use the full extent of the resources to serve the students?
That is our hope and anticipation. However, as you know, the governor has the authority to shut down schools, and also to require certain limitations in terms of the number of people that can gather in a particular building for any reason. Also, depending upon the guidance in the DESI document, at a certain number, certain cohorts may have to quarantine, or school may need to be closed down. If school closes and we're not able to return to the building, we're going to need to continue to teach remotely, but the hope is, is that we will be able to, teachers would be able to teach remotely from their classrooms. But I can't promise that, because I don't control the virus, and I also can't control government regulation.
Will school consider placing students who are friends, who travel together by private car in the same cohorts, so that families can arrange transportation as a group, lowering the number on the bus?
What families decide to do privately is not currently in the regulations, but in terms of riding on the bus, no, we cannot allow friends to sit on the bus together.
And as far as Jill putting, if families...
We shouldn't even encourage them to carpool, because that is not something we could do. You know, what people choose to do privately, but again, the success of the system and the safety of the system requires that we all do our part to social distance, to wear masks, to wash our hands, all of those things that we have been medically advised to do. So, again, what people choose to do, you know, beyond the authority of the school is what they're going to choose to do, but we can't encourage people to carpool, because that would be in direct contradiction to what we're trying to do by spacing on the bus.
Right, absolutely understood. And the school's ability to, if families decided to do that, in any event, the school's ability to put those children in the same cohort?
May be limited.
Yep, understood.
Now, yeah, I mean, we can't make those kinds of promises. We're going to do the best we can to keep families together, but we can't necessarily keep friends together. That's a whole, that's a whole different level of complication that would not be feasible with the time constraints we're under.
Right.
Usually, a schedule is done in the spring, and we're asking our building principals and their staff to put this together in record time, in a less-than-ideal situation. So, we're asking for some compassion with regards to that, and understanding that we do not pretend that this will be perfected. It will, it will help us to meet and keep routine and provide services for our children, but again, we recognize that a lot of people will be unhappy with the realities that the virus has created for us.
Yeah, understood. And before I go to Laura's next, from the school committee, and has a couple of questions, but I do believe tonight's discussion and the ones that we're having going forward will help the public understand just how complicated this is, as you just indicated, Jill, and understand that what can be done certainly will be, but a lot of accommodations won't be able to be made, and the primary focus is to get the core education to our children. With that said, Laura, go right ahead. Oh, you're on mute, Laura.
I'm looking through the questions in the chat, and most of the questions I have are in here in some form, so I'm going to let you address them as they've come through in the chat. But the one question I did have was really about how the hybrid groups A and B might be chosen. You know, I understand that the schedule is incredibly difficult, but I also, if, you know, if there's some consideration of students returning to the building, presumably part of the reason we're doing that is so that they can be with, you know, for social, emotional reasons, so that they can be with some friends. So, you know, how can we make sure that students, you know, are, if they're going back to school in a hybrid model, are going to be not feeling like, oh, all my friends are in the other group? I know that that always happens, it happens at the middle school, when they have, you know, the teams and things like that, but has there been any consideration of that?
So, they'll still be assigned, to the best of our ability, to the scheduled courses. It's just that half of the students in that class will not be there on the same day. So, if you consider it from a teacher's perspective, the reality is to, we could not possibly group people by friendship group. What, one thing that the Department of Education has asked us to consider is maybe assigning cohort by neighborhoods, because neighborhood and bus routes, they're more likely to have had contact with each other or in contact with each other than other groups, and that doesn't help the child whose best friend is in a completely different neighborhood. So, I'm, I think we're probably going to fall short in that area, but at the end of the day, I hope that this brings us all together, and we make new friends, and, you know... um, I hope that this brings us all together and, um, we make new friends, um, and, uh, you know, see, see the benefit of, of getting to know some new people too. Even, even when we're in middle school and high school and some of our, our friend groups are pretty, uh, solid, um, it doesn't hurt to make new friends too.
Right. No, absolutely. No, I mean, that's, that's absolutely true. And like I said, you know, everybody the first day in middle school when they get their, their team, they think, oh, my gosh, all my friends are on the other team and it's always fine. Uh, it's just a question. But my other question, I think there's a question like this, but I'll just ask it anyway. Um, you mentioned that a remote option will be available. Um, is that available to anyone who chooses a remote option if we do, um, decide to go back in person or a hybrid model? Can anyone choose the remote option or are there criteria for being able to be fully remote?
Anyone can choose the remote option.
Thank you.
But we need to, we need to have a commitment from them. We can't have people going back and forth between models unless of course they're sick, in which case, you know, but we need a commitment that you're not going to try to come back into a class that has been socially distanced at six feet apart, um, because you changed your mind about remote learning. And we need at least a semester commitment in order for this to, to work. And that's not meant to be primitive. That's just realistic in terms of, um, the, the stressors and the reality is that it would be placed upon the staffing, um, as well as scheduling.
No, that makes sense. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, Leslie Anne, you have a question?
Yep, thanks. Um, first of all, I just want to give you and Ryan and, and all your staff and all the teachers and everybody involved in this, kudos. And Chris Ackland, your safer committee. I know this isn't easy at all. Um, I'm on the reopening committee, so I'm seeing the sausage being made and it's, uh, it's, uh, probably the most complex and flavorful sausage I've ever seen. Um, and, uh, and everybody has a different, uh, uh, flavor profile for their sausages. And so I don't expect that everybody will be happy with the sausage that we end up making, at least initially, or as the year goes on. But we're doing that, we're doing our best and you guys honestly need, uh, Jill, you and your staff and your teachers and everybody involved need, uh, I wish we could send you on a, a day spa somewhere, but we can't because you all deserve, you deserve kudos and you deserve a giant hug and, and all those things aren't possible right now. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand that all the questions that are being asked are from very, you know, come from a, a really good place. And, and we all know that, that you're trying as hard as you can or we're trying as hard as we can to make this right. Um, I did have a question, um, specific that I didn't see on the question list yet. Um, and I don't think it was brought up in our working group meetings yet. Um, in our, we're focusing on grade seven through 12 here. Um, and, um, you know, I have a question about seventh graders and I have a question about seniors. Um, so, um, on the seniors, um, we all know that last year's senior year was a giant bust at the end of the year for a lot of seniors. Um, luckily they got, you know, a, a good portion of the year in and a lot of the activities in that they might have done before March 20, whatever, when schools closed. Um, that being so they didn't have, you know, their achievement night and they didn't have their prom and they didn't have graduation yet. Um, there's a lot of things that they missed and Michaela, and I know that you and your staff have, or took this to heart. Um, my question on the seniors is, um, even though they may be remote or in person part of the time or maybe in person full time, what kinds of efforts are going to be made to try to give these seniors some hybrid model of a remote year, I mean, of a senior year, um, so they don't not have any of the activities that the other classes have had the benefit of having in their last year of high school? Is that being considered by Michaela or Jill?
So I'm going to turn it over, uh, well, if, if I may, Madam Chair, answer on my part, but I, I don't need to take, um, to take away, uh, Principal Gill's response to that either.
Perfect.
Um, so my first response to that is one of the recommendations that we have made to the building principals is that once we have a, um, a, a model or an expectation of, uh, the school year, um, that our principals meet with their student councils and their leadership teams to begin considering what, uh, students, um, could help to put in place on behalf and, and what makes sense to them in terms of what would, um, help to bridge some of those, um, missing experiences. And, and in many cases, they will fall short of the traditional experiences. Um, but nonetheless, I think student voice is going to be critical in that piece. So I apologize for raising my hand. I, um, I again, I defer to Michaela Gill to answer that question.
Sure, thank you, Jill. You know, I think a lot of it will be contingent upon both the state guidelines and the commissioners' guidelines for us. You know, I, I think we've pivoted as quickly as we can and we did our best to provide a meaningful experience for our seniors, you know, with the parade, um, the yard signs, you know, we've done, um, some, um, backyard graduation ceremonies for our students who have, um, gone off into the military, for example, and, and won't be able to attend our outdoor graduation next weekend. So, um, we'll continue to be creative and think outside of the box to provide meaningful experiences for our seniors. And I would go so far as to argue that we're going to do the same for underclassmen as well, right? I mean, our, our incoming freshmen, you know, we had a planning meeting earlier this week, you know, freshman orientation is going to look a little different this year. Um, but we have staff members who are creative and are volunteering their time and we're gonna make it fun and special and meaningful and socially distant, um, and, and safe for them. So we'll continue to work with our class advisors, our student council advisor, as well as our class officers to plan those events. And I'd also just like to share that some of our vendors, so, um, Lifetouch, Jocins, you know, they're, they're having to shift as well. So they've actually been very helpful in providing, um, ideas and sponsoring different things for us to help celebrate student milestones.
Okay. That, that's great. I, I really appreciate it. And as you know, there's been other social things that have pivoted this summer. For instance, my daughter's the activity director at the Kingston Rec Camp and, and when they made the decision that they were going to have in-person camp, they, they pivoted activities and it's, it's really remarkable to see what they can pull off with social distance. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you don't mind, Madam Chair, if I might ask, ask Principal Dupill a question as well?
Sure.
Okay. So my question on the seventh grade, um, is, um, you know, every year is important to schooling. Don't get me wrong. There's something unique about every single year and every year ch- children meet different milestones at different ages. But coming into a district that is all of a sudden integrating three towns, um, you know, is, is a, is a special activity, but it's also a daunting activity after having two kids who've gone through it. So I'm sort of wondering on the same kind of thing, Jim, is that, you know, how are we going to be able to do things to best integrate, uh, those three towns together as seventh graders? It's such a critical, critical few months, as you know.
Yes, um, no, I, I agree. It is very difficult and the things that we're facing are very difficult. And we're constantly trying to weigh between the safety of our students and then, you know, obviously our routines, which are meant to help transitions and educate our students. So those are always the two things we're balancing. So, um, a couple of things that I've been looking at is, um, once we have some of the format, um, worked out a little more distinctly, is to, um, not only post, go online and send out information that I would normally do for the August open house to all parents and community members and students, but then to also do, um, a virtual meeting, uh, for parents that can come on, um, hear a presentation from me that they would normally get, um, as an act, to acclimate to the school, in the school from the August open house. And then an opportunity for them to ask questions and things like that. So, um, that would be my backup plan, obviously, you know, um, if we can't be in the school, which, you know, considering the situation that's going on, um, you know, I, I don't suspect us to be able to have an August open house like we normally do to transition our students. So that we're, we are going to have to look at doing a lot of these things virtually.
Yep. That's great. I just do hope that you're.
But, go ahead, Leslie, I'm sorry.
I just, I do hope that your, their cohorts are somehow integrated as well. I guess I would just suggest that potentially. But, okay, thanks for the answers.
Uh, cohorts, you mean the three towns?
Well, I mean, like, you know, in cohort A, I was, I'm hoping it has representation from the three towns so that the kids can start integrating as well.
I, I would agree, hundred percent.
That's where they become Lakers, right?
That, uh, they do. And I say that, you know, it's funny, but I, I say that at step up day, you know, this is your first day as a Laker, um, and, you know, and that's very important that we do become Lakers and we, and you know what? Our communities and our students really absorb that and they really do want to become Lakers and they absorb that. And, and it's a really nice thing to see happen at the middle school level. And then obviously they transitioned out to the high school and you do see Laker pride. So, yeah, I hopes, I hope, I absolutely hope that. So I agree with you, Leslie.
Thanks for your time.
Great. No, those were very good questions. All these questions have been very good. Um, the next question in the chat, um, I'm going to refer to Ryan's link because it does talk about or ask questions around if somebody tests positive, et cetera. So I'm going to refer that person to the link that Ryan provided a little bit earlier in the chat. The next question, in the hybrid model two, why can't students go five days? Seems disruptive to be home on Wednesday. Jill, I know you talked a little bit about that earlier in the presentation. I maybe just want to give a couple of highlights.
Sure. So, oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting a lot of feedback for some reason with the, um, the audio. So I'm not sure if I'm coming across clearly, but I see Marie nodding, so I think you can hear me. Um, in the hybrid model, why can't students go five days? Seems disruptive. I see what you're saying. So, um, students can, we have to divide our population in half. One, because of buses, um, because we can't fit them on the buses at three feet social distancing. Two, we wanted, uh, in the hybrid model, um, we want six feet distancing so that we are, um, providing that safety option. So since we can't get them all there on the bus anyway, we can provide six feet distancing. And that's one of the benefits of the hybrid model is that six feet distancing. So, um, students can't go five days regardless of what cohort they're in because we can't fit them in at six feet distancing and we can't fit them all on the buses unless of course, we agree that we're going to, um, provide additional runs. And one of the issues with the additional runs is not just the expense of it, um, but the time that it would take to get in all of those runs. Um, most of our day would be devoted to transportation and not to education. And in addition, we can't even guarantee you that we wouldn't have enough drivers to staff.
Jill, Jill, I'm sorry to interrupt that. I just want to clarify the question. It wasn't, I, I completely understand all of that. The question was specific to hybrid model two has cohort A going Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. I just wasn't sure the justification of why they weren't going on Wednesday. It was specific to hybrid model two. I do understand why they can't all go at the same time.
Um, part of the feedback that we had received and that we tried to incorporate in the model, um, was that we wanted additional time for cleaning of the schools. And someone else had asked, why can't they be cleaned at night? They can and they will be. They'll be cleaning that takes place daily. Um, but it would give us that, that added, uh, cleaning that can't take place when there are actual bodies in the school. Um, and, uh, we, we have not added additional staff, um, in terms of, um, our, our cleaning crew. Um, so again, it was just an added safety measure and it also provided us with an opportunity, um, to provide equity among the number of days so that, um, part of the rationale was a concern that if it wasn't consistent from week to week, it would be very difficult for working parents to plan what days, uh, their children were in school, in which days they were remote. Um, so, uh, again, um, we're looking at this from multiple perspectives and tried to incorporate some of those suggestions into the model. It is, um, again, I, I, I think I'm speaking to most of the reasons behind that, but if anyone from the team wants to add additional reasons, um.
Jill, Jill, this is Ryan. And I, I could add just a little bit about the, um, in the, in the hybrid two with the full weekend. It's a, the Wednesday full remote would also provide time for teachers to serve, to do live synchronous, uh, teaching to the cohort that's been out for the week, that's been, uh, remote. Because one of the great challenges for all districts is how do you do live synchronous teaching when you're facing, in some cases, the other half of the class? So it's a, it's an organizational challenge and we feel like with the kids away, doing remote for a week, that's an opportunity for staff to provide potentially some live, uh, teaching. Um, and also the Wednesdays provide a critical time for, um, staff development. We, and tonight we've heard a lot about the unprecedented challenges that we're facing and we can't, we need our staff to be an engine for solutions and we need some dedicated time, um, to continue to meet the learning needs of students and that involves staff to staff time. So some of those Wednesdays, um, need to also include beyond synchronous teaching, some time for staff to continue to develop, um, and improve our, our plan to make sure that we're doing everything we can.
Very good. Um, the next question, C T E.
Uh, so yes, I'm, I'm gonna have Michaela follow up. Um, but my first response is, is, uh, one of the things we discussed is having, um, some of the C T E requirements take place in person, uh, for students in that program as part of their core instruction. So, uh, although we didn't use it as a, a, a sample schedule for students, um, Principal Gill and, um, Mr. Glass are both, uh, working on, um, uh, schedules that would allow for in-person opportunities for students in C T E. I'm not sure if, uh, Principal Gill is, um, ready to say anything more than that at this time because it's all very new.
Sure. I, I mean, I can, I can echo your sentiments, Jill. Absolutely. Our goal is to, um, provide in-person instruction for our C T E students. Um, hot off the press, DESI released, um, the guidelines that Mr. Glass and I have been waiting for, um, for a few weeks now. So, um, he and I are actually both, um, in the building right now in our offices, um, safe, uh, safe spaces away from one another. Um, but we had started to review that information just before the start of the school committee meeting. So, um, stay tuned for some promising results.
That's actually very exciting. I, I was, I'm glad to hear that after the safer meeting last night that you have that guidance. And, and I'm also, um, somewhat comforted, uh, Michaela, that you're not at home and that you, as much as I love the logo of the school, I actually couldn't understand why you would have it painted on the wall of your living room. So.
I'm a Laker through and through.
Yeah, you certainly are. Um, the next question comes from a family that's new to the district and the parent is asking, um, they never received the first survey. How did they get on the mailing list? They obviously don't want to miss future surveys.
Sure. So if you go on our website, um, if you could email me, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Dupill, or Principal Gill, any one of us, once we have your information, once you're registered, it actually goes to, um, to our tech team and they'll get you in the system. But just to double check, if you would like to email one of us with your contact information, we can make your, make sure you're set up as quickly as possible.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, the next question, um, has been answered. Uh, it's regarding, even if we go back, um, uh, in the classroom, does a child have the ability to, to, um, learn remotely? And yes, you, you've answered that one. Some of these obviously have, have been posted before, um, before you had, um, completed the presentation. Um, the next question you also just answered, why can't the cleaning be done at night and allow for classes on Wednesdays? So we, we did touch upon that already. Um, the next one is from, um, school community member, Ed. Ed, do you want to, um, ask your question live?
Yeah. Hold on just a second. I had to turn on my speaker. Uh, do all the students have Chromebook? Because there's situations where they could possibly need to be on the computer at the same time. And, uh, that's concerning to me. Um, do you want me to just say all of them at once, Paula?
So I can, I can answer, um, if you'd like, Paula. So, uh, our tech team is working on, uh, getting our Chromebooks ready and also purchasing additional Chromebooks to replace some of those that are, um, beyond repair, um, using CARES Act funding, um, from, from our, uh, and, and, uh, in our towns. But, um, the other thing, the other question, so yes, we will redeploy Chromebooks just as we have done before. Um, and yes, we will follow a similar, um, procedure for the deployment, uh, in the sense that, uh, we will assess needs and, and provide opportunities for pickup should, uh, students not be reporting to school in person. not be reporting to school in person. But that, our intention is for every child to have a Chromebook. I see that you're asking about the medical waiting room. Yes, we will have a medical, um, a medical room for nurses and they are working on that plan. One of their concerns is the need for that, um, room to be staffed because they cannot be in both the nurse's office and the, the waiting room. That has to be separate. So, again, this is an issue of, um, either, uh, a staffing need or redeployment of staff that we currently have, uh, which will have implications for, uh, our building principals in terms of supports that they need to take from other areas to make sure that this is, um, a priority. But this is a requirement. This isn't a choice and this is something that we will need to do. So, uh, again, we, we will, we will be compliant with all safety guidance. The governor can make a choice that we don't have in-person school and that would be that. We would have to do what the state government says, yes. That is true. Um, I, I don't, uh, I don't know that that's his inclination, um, at this time, but, um, yes.
Thank you, Jill.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Paul, I think you're on mute.
Oh, sorry, I, I, okay, thank you. What are the provisions if the staff who run the main offices get sick? Who becomes administration running the building?
So, um, fortunately, um, in central office, we have three other central office administrators that, um, or, or unfortunately would have to, have to pick up the slack, but we're a team and, uh, we love each other dearly, so, um, we will be there for each other. I know that the high school has, uh, not only an administrative team, but many teacher leaders that they could call upon for support and have had to call upon for support in times of need as a family. Right now, I'm concerned about Mr. DuPille, um, because he, uh, he's in need of a new assistant principal. And so, it is our hope to fill that position as soon as possible. But as you know, um, we've been, uh, holding off with our positions and posting them as anticipated positions, uh, because of the uncertainty of our budget. But again, um, we will all be here for Mr. DuPille, um, and, and, uh, look out for him as well, uh, to the best of our ability. The good news is, is that this, uh, this pandemic has given us a lot of time to work together as a team and strengthened our resolve as a team, uh, to work together so that we're stronger, uh, throughout whatever challenges may face us. Uh, this is not something that any one of us can do alone. And anything that we present to you is never the work of a, a single person. It is the result of, um, our team and their efforts and their concern and care. So, I feel grateful that we've been able to depend upon each other, uh, throughout all of this. So, yes, it's a sound worry, but again, there comes a point where we will also have to follow the guidance in terms of whether or not it's a point where we have to shut down. But a, a single one of us may not be the reason why we need to, uh, shut down in-person learning.
No, that was, and I, I can understand the strengthening of the team, given the, the situation that you've been thrust into. So, I, I actually really like your answer there. The next question, so if you don't want your child to wear a mask or they can't, the only option is remote?
So, uh, that's not necessarily true. Under the Department of Ed, that remains to be seen. Um, it, it depends on whether or not that's a, um, how do I say this? Let's, let's start with what the DESI guidance is. The DESI guidance does not require masks for students who are younger than, um, grade two, I believe. Um, and then there are some students who are not medically able to wear a mask. Um, and, uh, so there could be exceptions made for those students. And then there are also students with special needs that are unable, uh, to wear a mask as, as well, and, uh, exceptions may need to be made there. Again, if we were to follow something other than the, the Department of Education guidance or the state guidance, that is something that, um, would need to be, uh, worked into the plan and, um, may potentially, uh, be an issue, uh, with regards to bargaining as well.
Okay, I'm just coming back online. I lost you momentarily, so I'm just trying to pick up the chat. If somebody could read the next question until my chat comes up, that would be great.
So, I see, um, so if you don't want your kids, I'm sorry, I'm on to, if we have webcams, can teachers conduct classes from school while the kids are at home? Yes, there is no reason why a teacher could not, um, present, not, not necessarily from a web, well, from a computer camera as well. They can have synchronous meetings from school. That, that is, that is possible. The one thing we can't do without parent permission would be the, um, the recording of students in a home. That would require special permissions. I hope I answered that one. The second one, um, will there be periodic required testing of student staff, bus drivers, monitors? Do state guidelines speak to this at all? So, um, yes, uh, if you take a look at some of the guidance, uh, they provide some information. Mary, I don't know if that, if that guidance is, will answer or, or be to the level that you're looking for, but there is, uh, state guidance with regards to, uh, the testing. And I believe, um, Mr. Lynch provided a link to that. Will there be additional hand washing stations be provided given that most sinks are in the bathrooms? We will have to work in opportunities for hand washing. There are no current plans to add additional sinks to either building. But there will be both, uh, opportunities for hand sanitizing, hand washing, um, and mask breaks as part of the school day. How many staff have indicated that they will not work if the decision is full return or hybrid? We don't have, um, a commitment from staff. We have survey data. Uh, so our next step, once we have direction and once the teachers have a better understanding of what the, the comprehensive plan is, our plan is to then, um, consider, uh, commitment statements, um, and develop a protocol for determining, uh, how, uh, remote teaching would be prioritized. And, um, right now, in our early discussions, priority would be given to those staff, um, who, who qualify for medical safety reasons. I am a nurse and I am required to be tested to interact. Will the teachers be tested before the beginning of school and any time after? The commissioner in his most, one of his recent statements said that the state was working on testing protocols for staff. And again, we don't have details on that, but prioritizing educators, for example. Please stay tuned. But again, the information that we do know is in that document that we have provided in the link in the chat, uh, earlier in the chat.
Keep going, Jill, because I don't have any of the chat from before. I lost my connection.
We have a question, how will CTE classes happen? Well, CTE classes may have, may happen in person. They may happen remotely. Principal Gill has already spoken to the possibility of those, of some of the courses happening in person if in fact, we're able to meet in person. But again, there will be safety protocols in place because again, this is, uh, our CTE classes require, um, a lot of hands-on learning and so that's going to require additional precautions for those classes. Question about the bus number for safety. I think seventy-seven kids per bus must be in elementary school. Three to a seat, yes. Um, I have been talking, taking high school students on school bus trips for twenty-five years. If you put forty-five, you're absolutely right. Uh, the seventy-seven, uh, passenger, um, you can obviously fit more elementary students than high school students. Christine, do you want to handle the other pieces of that regarding the buses?
What I'm just reading is that she's asking about the, what would be permissible on a bus? And I think it was showed is that on, on a seventy-two passenger bus, I think it's twenty-four, and on a seventy-seven passenger, it'd be twenty-five students per DESI's protocol.
Thank you. Is there a plan to open all of the bathrooms at the high school for the benefit of additional hand washing stations? Yes, we, we're anticipating that we're going to have to have certain protocols in place, uh, for hand washing, uh, and for accessibility to the sinks. Again, I don't know if either principal wants to speak more on that issue, um, or if that satisfies, but I, the, obviously, things are going to need to be, um, the priority will be on the safety, the hand washing and the sanitizing, um, more than it has been, obviously, in the past without, uh, pandemic.
I would just add to that, Jill. We would also have a safety protocol in place so that we don't have too many students in the restroom at once violating social distance.
Will younger siblings be considered when assigning cohorts for childcare purposes? Yes, uh, we would, we would love to consider, um, those types of scenarios. As I stated early in the presentation, one of the things we hope is that our schools can be on similar schedules so that this is manageable for families who have children in multiple schools. But ultimately, the decision of how to start and the plans, um, must be approved by each individual school committee. So, we will, to the best of our ability, um, attempt to link and coordinate those schedules. My concern is that if each town chooses a different model, um, it will become more difficult for us to, to meet those requests. It's certainly something that we're aware of and certainly something we want to be able to, um, help with. You said anyone may choose remote. If, if one wants to go in person, is a mask being mandatory? Yes, masks are mandatory for grades two and up unless, of course, um, there's a medical reason why you cannot wear a mask. Um, and then, uh, while students in cohort A are in school learning, will cohort B be learning along cohort? Not alongside, they will be taking different courses with different teachers on, um, on their remote days, with the exception of Wednesday, uh, where Mr. Lynch has already described the process by which students could connect with, uh, their, their, their teachers remotely. Or are what teachers are teaching cohort A be what they will be teaching cohort B? So, yes, uh, to the best of our ability, what we would like to do, and the principals are working on the feasibility of this, is consider for a moment, an English teacher has one class of thirty students. The teacher would meet with half of those students on Monday and Tuesday. The teacher would meet with the second half of those students on Thursday, Friday, in person. Um, and Wednesday would be that remote, uh, there would be, uh, a remote time, uh, for students in that class to connect with, with teachers. I'm hoping I answered that one. What will be happening with CTE classes, carpentry and childcare? Again, uh, we just received our updated, well, our guidance, uh, regarding CTE today. Uh, I think it was at four forty-five. Um, and so, we have been online since six o'clock. So, um, at a, at a quick glance, I can tell you what I quickly saw and I did not read carefully is that there are additional precautions that we must take for those areas and that there are going to be limitations, um, for some of those programs. But it's not something, uh, that, uh, on the surface, it seems insurmountable. Um, I, I, I know that Principal Gill and Mr. Glass are working very hard to make, uh, CTE, um, an in-person reality as soon as possible. Can staff training be done at night or weekends to avoid missing class time? That would be a contractual issue and would need to be bargained. Not an impossibility, but certainly, um, an added, um, uh, something that would need to be, um, addressed with our, our, um, teacher unions. Will cohort B be slightly behind cohort A? Both scenarios, group A will receive in person before their remote learning, B, but it appears it will start with remote and then, so it's not so much, it will be the, it will be, uh, the same content for the week, whether you're A or B. So, rather than thinking of it as anyone being behind, uh, you could also think of it as that the people in the remote classes for the first three days are ahead in their remote classes. But the reality is, is, um, the, the content will be the, the same whether you're in cohort A or cohort B. And the learning experience should be the same, similar and as same as possible, recognizing that different students and different personalities and different questions and different interactions bring, uh, different nuances to a classroom setting. So, um, what type of HVAC system do we have? I recall going to open house conferences at, at the middle school and the system not working. Is there an outdoor air source that will provide adequate air circulation? So, this is something that our new facilities manager has been working on, uh, with our, um, our building staff, um, and, uh, has worked with, um, uh, building principals to some degree. I don't know if either principal wants to speak to this issue or would be able to speak to this issue in more depth, but I do know, um, that our facilities manager, uh, is working on making sure our, our ventilation systems are up. I also know that he is looking into UV lights. There are some limitations with UV lights and there are some expenses associated with UV lights, but UV lights are not out of the question and he is looking into different options as well. Are there sports planned? At this time, the MIAA has not, um, released any information regarding sports and those activities. In part, it's, uh, to allow schools to first, uh, focus on academics, I think is the, uh, a big issue behind that. Another big issue is that a lot of our fall sports are contact sports. Um, and so, the Department of Education is working with their medical advisory team to determine what, if anything, will be, um, safe for students to participate in. But stay tuned on additional information when it becomes available. But we don't project any information regarding sports until mid-September. Are we considering bus transportation only for eligible students that live over two miles from their assigned schools to help with overcrowding? So, again, I'm going to, um, ask Christine for her help on this, but, um, uh, we have a, a few issues. Two miles is, um, is required for elementary, uh, if it's over two miles. The, the fact that we, um, our regional school also, um, requires us to provide transportation. I don't know if Christine Healy has anything else she wants to add to that.
We are required to transport all students at the regional level and students could opt differently if they chose, but we have to provide transportation for all. And then another piece of this puzzle is that with the, the transportation, we receive a reimbursement for regional transportation costs that is part of funding our budget.
What happens if a teacher needs to take a day off when they are scheduled to teach remotely synchronized? Again, this is part of the, um, the, uh, obstacles that we're, uh, looking to address in terms of perhaps assigning teams, uh, to help cover, uh, for certain opportunities, if that's even possible. It's also the reason why we add, we added the possibility of daily subs as a possible expense, um, so that we can continue to provide, uh, continuity of, uh, services for our students. Uh, this is some, this is a work in progress, to be quite honest with you. This is to be determined. But we recognize that substitutes and teaming, uh, may be the best way to provide that kind of continuity. Can you elaborate on how the hand washing opportunities will be incorporated into the day and how the bathrooms will remain socially distanced during hand washing? Thank you. Also, can you discuss passing time and social distancing and how this will take place? So, again, we have some guidance from the state with regards to expectations, uh, that our building principals will be working at the building level and will be part of our more detailed plan, but are not currently part of the preliminary plan, uh, as we have been awaiting certain, uh, minimum, uh, expectations regarding these issues. One of the things that One of the things that we have used in the past is an e-fall pass system, which allows our teachers to see who is out of the rooms at certain times. This may be a way that we can monitor how many students are out of a class at a particular time. Again, we want to honor students' ability to wash their hands and go to the bathroom. We also want to make sure that we don't have too many students congregating at one time. There are also ways that we may be able to potentially staff or monitor in ways that we have in the past. We have also asked the principals to consider teaming or cohorting or grouping groups of students to certain areas of the building to avoid certain contacts. This becomes more and more difficult at the high school level because you have so many singleton courses where you can't necessarily put all ninth graders who take honors, English, in the same cohort because they may not all be taking honors chemistry, or, you wouldn't say chemistry in ninth grade, but you know what I mean. So again, it becomes more difficult because of the levels and it becomes more difficult because of the number of singleton options. We will try to preserve as much opportunity for our students and because we know that for some students, that is what makes schools enjoyable for them. But we recognize that there are going to be some things that will need to be put into place that kind of limit some of our options for students potentially. But again, our high school staff is working on that. I know Mr. DePeel has put forward some preliminary plans. If either of them would like to speak to some of these issues.
Jill, I can talk about cohorts if you would like and what we're looking at doing.
I defer to the chair. I don't think she has a voice again.
I do, I just keep, I hit it and then I turn it back off. A couple of things, you certainly can, I think, in glancing at some of the questions, some of them are, have been touched upon before. So after you kind of speak to the topic, Jim, I'm going to say let's sort of scroll through and pick up ones that haven't been covered in the interest of time. The committee does have executive session after this as well. And I think, again, I think we're getting some redundant questions. So, Jim, I'll let you speak to it kind of at a high level and then we'll move on.
Okay, I'll try to speak to it quickly. The, so, to keep it in cohorts, which is a long Desi guidance to keep our students safe, we already have our building broken into six teams, so that breaks our students into three teams in the seventh grade and three teams to the eighth grade. And then from that, we're also looking at breaking those three teams into four individual cohorts within that team. And then, again, where we already talked about, half the students would come on Monday, Tuesday, and then the other half would come Thursday, Friday. So what we're looking at for each team is roughly 40-something students coming into the building per team and then breaking them down into four cohorts within that team to then be in the classroom and hopefully to narrow that so that those 11 or 12 students are then in the classroom with their core teachers in that classroom and only moving within that pod. I know most of you have seen the pods that are at the middle school, so therefore they're not cross-contaminating across the building. And, you know, and our hope, again, is to keep everybody safe and to keep our students in a more defined location, defined cohort with their teachers. And so that's what we're looking at doing, again, and it's for student safety.
Great. Jill, I think the next one that is sort of new or a little bit different is somebody's asking us to clarify, is it possible that each town could have a different return plan? I think there's some clarification between the district and the elementary level.
Yes. So, in our regional model, we don't have one school committee that makes a decision for our elementary schools and our secondary schools. Each of our school committees, we have a school committee for Kingston, Plimpton, and Halifax for our elementary schools. Those school committees get to vote and decide those plans for those groups. We are presenting similar information to each of those school committees. But again, ultimately, the school committee will play a role in deciding what this preliminary entry plan will look like. We need their vote, their support, but also what the, we also need their vote and support for the comprehensive plan as well. So there could be differences among the three schools, the three elementary schools and also the intermediate school and the middle and high school. So, again, while we are encouraging one plan for schools, ultimately, the school committee has the authority to decide what is best for its town.
Very good. I'm going to jump down a bit. I know Mary McKinnon had asked a question or made a comment about, you know, as much as possible, perhaps the three towns making similar decisions. I'm going to put that aside for a bit because we did talk about the ability of the school committees to make their own decisions and it may be based on various factors, age groups, et cetera. There's another question here, are sports going to happen in the hybrid scenario? We've covered that a bit already this evening. There's, you know, sports will be determined at a later date. I'm going to jump down to, there's a question about clarifying what Cohort B students will be doing on Cohort A days. I think you've covered that, Jill, but if you want to just maybe outline that again, you or Ryan, and then we can move down a little bit further on the list.
I'm going to ask, help me out because I'm not sure if I'm being clear, so maybe if Ryan takes a turn, he might be able to provide greater clarity.
So, this is the question that states they'll be given the same learning material in a given week, and then the person's asking, how will the group be receiving instruction prior while the other half is beginning it? So I think, I think a teacher would plan from the standpoint of, if Cohort A is in the first two days for in-person instruction, that teacher would be, that teacher would be overviewing the learning for the week, providing those learning experiences for the Cohort A students. Cohort B students, we go back to the schedule that Jill shared, a majority of their online remote learning for Cohort B at the beginning of the week would involve content from their remote courses. So their focus would be, potentially, their synchronous learning would be on those experiences. Wednesday, everybody's remote, perhaps the teacher would be doing some social-emotional learning pieces, whole-class overview on Wednesday, then supporting Cohort B with the in-person components on Thursday and Friday. And then the A cohort students would, again, their focus would shift toward the courses that they're taking more remotely. So I think it may be most simple to say that, like Jill said, it is organized on a weekly basis, but when students are in school, those are the days when their learning is focused on those core content areas. So I hope Megan that tries to answer the question a little bit more.
Thank you, Ryan. The next one that looks to be sort of a newer question, if you will, how will fully remote students integrate with other students that may be attending school in either the hybrid model or the fully in-school model? Will they be participating remotely with students that are in the classroom?
That is not part of the anticipated model. They would be assigned a separate cohort. However, on Wednesdays, there would be an opportunity to integrate with sections of classes. The reality is, is in terms of staffing, people assigned to a remote teacher would not necessarily be assigned to an in-person teacher. The in-person teacher would be teaching in-person. The remote, a separate remote teacher, to the greatest extent possible that we could schedule, would be teaching the remote classes. So there wouldn't be necessarily a connection with the students who are in school, other than on those, perhaps on Wednesdays for maybe a smaller breakout in certain areas, but even then, it's most likely that they're going to be assigned a separate remote teacher and their class will become the students in that remote class.
Okay, very good, thank you. The next question I see goes back to the HVAC system. I don't know if Matt's on the call tonight or in the meeting tonight. I don't know that there's a lot more we can add to that at this point. If Matt's on the line or I stand corrected, let me know. Otherwise, I think we've covered that to the best of our ability at this time. Gordon, would you like to ask your question about minimum hours for remote learning?
Sure, right, right. But I was wondering how many synchronous hours we have to plan.
Ryan, I see you going to answer it, sorry.
I was just going to say, we have control, we would articulate a learning schedule for students, both in-person and remote. The remote schedule for students, even if some of that is asynchronous or like self-directed, would need to total the minimum time on learning. Typically, it's 900 for elementary, 990 for secondary, but some of those hours have been reduced. But you can use, as long as you articulate what that combination is, that's how you meet the time on learning.
Thank you.
There's a question there about the start date for school. I just wanted to clarify that the commissioner gave 10 days. Today, the commissioner said that those 10 days are expected so long as you don't start school after September 16th. So those 10 days for training and preparing have to be used prior to the 16th. With that being said, the school committee would need to vote that school calendar.
There is a question, when will the seventh graders receive the class schedule that they're being placed in? I don't know if you want to add some color there. I mean, I don't know that we're there yet.
So, students will not receive schedules or placements until we have defined the learning model and we have an approved learning model. And then the principals will set about making schedules. We also need confirmation of staff and we need commitments of students who will be learning remotely. Once that's done, then the principals would be able to get, and their staff would be able to get out the scheduling assignments. And there was also a question with regards to remote learning. Remote learning would be scheduled, that would be the difference between this year and last year. It would be a scheduled time that classes meet and it would mirror the in-person schedule in terms of times that classes would meet to avoid schedule conflicts.
Okay, thank you. There's a question asking for clarification again. While I understand both Cohort A and B will be learning the same material in any given week, my concern is that half the group will be receiving instruction prior to any remote learning assignments, while the other half will be with remote assignments and not receiving instruction lessons until day four of the school week. Is this correct or will Cohort B receive remote learning instruction on Monday and Tuesday as well?
I think, it looks like Principal Gill is, would like to answer if that's okay through the chair.
Certainly, please, thank you.
Sure, so I think it might be helpful because, you know, it is difficult, so I understand where all these questions are coming from. It's hard to wrap your head around this, but it might be helpful to look at it as if you're a student. So if I'm a student in Cohort A, and I'm going to come into the buildings on Monday and Tuesday, and I'm going to have my English, my math, my science, and my history class, for example. On Wednesday, I'm going to have access to all of my classes remotely. And then on Thursday and Friday, I'm going to have access to my electives, so maybe wellness, music, art, and I'm going to go into those classes virtually. If I'm a student in Cohort B, I'm doing the opposite. So on Monday and Tuesday, I'm going to log on to my synchronous remote classes for music, art, and wellness. On Wednesday, I'm going to have access to all of my classes remotely. And then Thursday and Friday, I'm going to go in the building and I'm going to have math, English, science, and history, and I'm going to get the same instruction that a classmate of mine at Cohort A got earlier in the week. So I hope that helps clarify those questions.
I think the parent might be concerned that on Wednesday, the child might be responsible for something that they haven't learned yet. And I think our reassurance would be that Wednesday would look different. It's not as if they had missed class. It would require a different approach to the type of learning that takes place on Wednesday, whether it be small group instruction or focus on social-emotional learning, as we had mentioned before. But it's not going to be a scenario where someone's going to be penalized because they weren't part of Cohort A. I hope that helps.
And I would add, just on the complexity piece, that this is a, we believe, once we begin our models, that we will be able to rapidly improve and find best practices. And these are models that are being proposed by many districts. And we will be paying careful attention to best practices to make sure that we're doing it the best we can. And so these are, initially, these are our plans and we also will be paying close attention to what's working best for our teachers and teachers around us to make sure that we're serving students the best we can.
Thank you. The next one is around budget, and I'm going to touch upon this just ever so briefly. The question is, how can we plan with new required expenditures if we don't know the actual budgets per school? You know, that's a $64,000 question, really. We're struggling as a school committee, we're struggling as towns, we're struggling as, you know, school communities with all of these new requirements and, you know, not having a budget in place, not knowing what sort of, you know, government funding is going to be supporting us, the CARES Act, et cetera. There's no good answer to that. We have to keep planning and doing the best that we can for the communities and the students and the teachers and the other staff and hope that the budget and some numbers start to come forward so that we can make some decisions, finalize a budget, and get in front of the towns. We do have a budget that we have sent to the towns. Not all the towns have had town meeting. And the budget is a $64,000 question and it's probably one of the hardest ones to answer. There's no good answer for that right now. It's, again, unprecedented times. This has never occurred, to the best of my knowledge, in any school year where we have all these new requirements and not really sure where exactly all the funding is coming from. So let's plan for what we need and we'll have to figure out the budget as soon as we can. I know that's a poor answer, there's no better answer, I don't think, for it. The next question, Michaela maybe, they're asking about how passing between classes will take place in the high school since teaming isn't an option.
Absolutely. We would stagger passing times. We intend to make our We intend to make our hallways one direction to limit the amount of time or the opportunities for students to pass one another. Same with our stairwells. And as best as we can, we will try to group our students in areas of the building to limit them going to other parts.
Thank you. Laura, you have the next question, and it's around remote courses. Do you want to ask that live, if you would?
Sure. I think we're just, there's still some confusion. And I see a lot of questions coming up about this whole idea of how the remote, or sorry, how the hybrid model would work. You know, I heard Jill say that the elective courses would be on the remote days. But if students are in school two days and not in school three days, does that mean that they're spending half of their time on learning on their electives and half on their, I hate to say core courses, because I believe that all the courses are core. But, you know, it just, it seems like there's a lot of questions. And I'm still kind of confused about how that would work. And it sort of wraps in with Leslie Ann's question as to, you know, if students are having certain courses for less than half the week, then should we be expecting that students will learn half as much throughout the school year?
So one of the things I should clarify is that the example I gave was merely an example with an emphasis on bringing required courses to in-person. And I emphasized certain elective courses for remote because of safety reasons. But the reality is, is that there's going to be a combination of classes on the remote days. And to the best of our ability, we're trying to make sure that the core classes or core plus CTE hours are occurring on those in-person days for our students. Yes, you are correct that in-person time will be limited for, limited in comparison to last year's. But there, you, please also recognize that we've relegated elective courses to remote learning, which has been, is no substitute for in-person teaching. So we recognize the imperfection of this. But it's our way of emphasizing core requirements over non-required courses while maintaining the importance of certain disciplines for our children in terms of their interests and in terms of continuing to meet mass core requirements for graduation for our school, which there have been no changes with regards to Massachusetts core requirements. And so that's, you know, the number of years that you have to take English, math, science, a history, foreign language, an art class, for example. All of those things remain in the Massachusetts core. That has not changed. So these are things that we had to weigh and balance. And we have made the decision to try to invest our in-person time to the best of our ability to required courses to the greatest extent possible. We would prefer for all of our classes, you know, to be, to back to the way it was before the pandemic. But that's not a possibility. So it's also not a possibility to get all of our students who we need to transport to school every day. So again, we're working with the realities of social distancing on the bus. And then we're working with the realities of social distancing in the classroom. And what we are going to need to do is really need to focus on what's most important for students to know and be able to do, which is a sound, effective way of teaching, regardless of whether or not you're in a pandemic. We all like to believe that, as a former teacher myself, that everything that I covered in my class was critical to the students in front of me. But the reality is, is that if, for anyone who studied for a test or an exam, a lot of those things, you may have remembered for the test. And then you can't remember the next week or even the next day. So while, you know, I can't imagine cutting anything from a history curriculum, there are many people who have survived without remembering what the Zimmerman Note, the XYZ Affair, Tippit Knew and Tyler Two, all of those very compelling, interesting stories from history. But at the end of the day, as a history teacher, what I'd need to do is to help my students, teach them the skills of thinking like a historian, using primary sources to support an argument, making sure that we're talking about certain essential understandings and questions that help drive and help students to think critically. Those are the things that the students will hold on to. Teaching our students to persevere, to read, to write, to calculate, to problem solve, to work together as a team. Those things are timeless. Those things need to be the focus. Those things will help our children to survive and persevere. The coverage of content will need to be secondary to what's most important that students know and be able to do. Some places refer to them as power standards. But that's, that's how we're going to address this issue.
I think one thing that would be really helpful for our, you know, more fleshed-out plan would be a more detailed sort of example of what that might look like for students. I know you had a general example, and we don't know what it's going to look like. But I know that the buildings are working on their scheduling. So I think that would be really helpful to answer some of these questions. To sort of say, you know, this is what's happening from the school's end, but this is also what's happening from the student's end, you know, on a given day. I think that would be really helpful. But thank you.
Thanks. I'm great. I think at this point, I'm going to jump down to Chris from the school committee. He had a question, then he wanted to make a motion. Although we do have a handful of questions left, I think this has been a wonderfully robust discussion tonight, wonderfully robust. I do want to start to put some closure to it, even though we have a couple of more questions hanging out there, and move into executive session with the school committee. Having said that, Chris, I know you said you had a question you wanted to throw out there.
Yeah, I think I'll sort of answer through this last tranche of questioning in terms of how much we're going to be able to teach. I think looking primarily at the hybrid model versus, you know, the old model of everyone being classed, you know, full day, all day. That was sort of my first question. I think these questions are great. I think some of these questions are very specific to scenario in-person, hybrid, and remote. So my motion right now is to support Jill in her proposal for ABC or in-person, hybrid, and remote for submitted to the DFC.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second from the committee?
I'll second it. It's Eric.
Okay, and I do need, is there any further discussion from the committee members?
Just a clarification, Madam Chair.
Sure.
This is just, just for clarification for the public. So this is not a selection of an approach. This is giving the superintendent the authority to submit the required documents to the state.
That is true. Go ahead, Jill. Whoop, you're on mute.
I should note, just so that it's not misleading to anyone or anyone misunderstands, as part of the document that the Department of Education requires us to fill out, they ask us, although it is non-binding, they ask us to denote whether or not, what we are leaning toward. We do need to let them know what model we are leaning toward as of today. It is non-binding. But nonetheless, the state will use that data to help influence their decisions. So I would caution us to try to make the best decision we can.
With that said, Madam Chair, I don't know if you can see me because there's so many pictures on the screen.
I actually can't see you.
Oh, hi. Nice to see you. It's funny how you can see, you know.
It moves.
I'd either like to offer a friendly amendment to Chris's motion or just an amendment to support the non-binding indication of a hybrid model.
Do I have a second to the amended motion?
I have a, I'll second it, but I have a question as well. This is Eric.
Sure. Go right ahead.
So my question is, since we are leaning towards hybrid, do we need to say Model 1 or Model 2 of hybrid? Because I think I would lean more towards Model 1, or do we not need to get that granular?
Go ahead, Jill. I'm going to guess we don't need to get that granular. But I, we would need to do a straw poll of the committee to see where we're leaning towards as well.
I think that would be helpful, especially for our principals. But please note that they may be running into some things scheduling where, as we put together the comprehensive report, we will draw out those considerations to you when we have a more comprehensive report based upon their feedback.
Okay. I'm going to put my two cents in, and then I'll, I guess I will do a roll call of approving the plan that must be submitted, the preliminary plan, and taking a non-binding, oh, I guess perhaps I should do the non-binding, where we're leaning towards first. I am only comfortable giving a non-binding answer at this point. And that was the one thing I wanted to say as one individual committee member. So if the committee would permit, well, I guess I can do it in one question. If I could ask each of you to tell me what you're leaning towards. Or actually, Jill, that's not fair to me. I guess, can you tell us what you, as a superintendent in your school community, are leaning towards? And then we can go to the committee members. Is that a fair question on you?
It's, I think, sorry, I'm getting feedback again. I think it's a fair question. It's a difficult one to answer when you say "school community", because I think, as I've shown tonight, the community is divided in terms of what they think the best approach or what they would lean toward. What I can say is that the way that our preliminary reentry is written is that we were leaning toward hybrid. We were planning hybrid, thinking that the 10 days provided for the state would help us to do some training and preparation, if it was safe to do so. Again, recognizing that the state health data could change, that we could then transition to hybrid with the six-feet distancing. That, for some, will not be acceptable. But we do have the remote option for students. I also recognize that our teachers have a number of concerns with regards to safety even at six feet. I need to, you know, I need to present all of those different points of view to this committee. I don't think there's one unified voice in this. And one of our school committees has voted a plan. Plington Elementary School has already voted their plan. What we have submitted to you was a leaning toward hybrid. It also forced us to confront and build the most difficult of all of the models. So in our minds, it helped to address both the in-person realities that we would be confronted with, and it helped us to address the technological or remote learning needs that we would be confronted with. So that is how we chose to focus a lot of our time in terms of our working group discussions and our greatest concerns in terms of supporting principals and thinking about what that may look like, and we continue to work on. What we have presented is a leaning toward hybrid. And we have also denoted a language that is fairly open with regard to the model. I don't know if Ryan has that available to him. I don't have it on my screen because I have the other presentations up. But Ryan, if you could find for us the exact language in there with regards to the hybrid model so that they know what we're asking them to approve. It's also linked to your Google Meet tonight, I believe.
Yeah, so Jill, are you asking what's the exact question on the DESI form?
The exact question, but what our language is with regards to the hybrid model, because a committee member had asked us if they need to decide which hybrid model. And I wanted them to know the language that was included in the current plan.
Sure. I'm looking at it, and it just discusses hybrid learning Model 1. And it uses the information from the feasibility study for why we chose hybrid learning Model 1. And the state just asked us to commit to the check-off-the-box for what we're leaning toward. I'm not sure that answers your question.
So hybrid learning Model 1 was the, I think, for those people who aren't familiar, that was the one with the two consecutive days and three remote.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Is there any further committee discussion on this before we vote the preliminary plans being submitted to the state as well as a non-binding indication of what plan we would go with? Is there any further committee discussion?
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, Mike.
No, Eric, you can go.
I was just going to ask a quick question, or not ask a question, but somebody asked in the chat about why we are not also considering going back full-time in our vote in terms of which one we prefer. But all three are available for us to vote. Go ahead, Jill.
Yes, the one problem is getting them to school.
Correct. Right, right. Minor problem.
Well, you know, to be honest with you, I, in my heart, in my mind, and again, tonight's non-binding, so I do want the additional week to think about it. I would want to vote the best way to educate our children and then let the pieces fall where they may. You know what I'm saying? So if we needed more money for buses, for instance, if the best way to educate our children was to bring them all back, again, everybody has that remote option anyway. So in a sense, you're always going to have a hybrid. You know, you're going to end up with a hybrid from this point on. That's just my feeling as one committee member. I would vote, in the end, I will vote the best model, I believe, and let the chips fall where they may after that. I don't think you can factor in what would we be able to get funding for buses and what have you. But that's just my take on it. Mike, did you have a question as well?
Yes, I follow. No, just a comment that, you know, in Plington, we are leaning towards the status of remote instead of the hybrid in order to just slowly roll things out. So we can look at all the opportunities for the in-person learning. I can, when I was in the Plington meeting, I was speaking to the six-foot rule. And where my work is, and I've been in three different buildings, and we've really concentrated on that, the hand washing and limiting the number of people in the building. And knock on wood, there's about 50 people and nobody's been sick. So I don't know if, when you're starting to get that many kids in the building, if rushing in is the best. I'm not certain, so.
Well, how does the committee feel at this point? If this is, if we are voting tonight to send the preliminary document in with a non-binding preliminary selection, and if it's non-binding, we can continue the discussion on it? and if it's non-binding, we can continue the discussion on it, how does the committee feel? And I guess there's already a motion on the floor, so I really don't know that I can sort of ask this. Lisa, what's the last motion on the floor?
The last motion on the floor was to support the proposal presented to be submitted to DESI. And then Leslie Ann amended it to support a non-binding hybrid model. And you were going to decide on which hybrid model you were going to choose.
Madam Chair, this is Leslie Ann. Just for clarification, because the DESI deadline requires that we indicate a preferred model, I don't necessarily think that mine's an amendment to Chris's motion. I just think it's a friendly, because we have to indicate that. So, I mean, I don't think we need to vote on my motion and then vote on Chris's motion. I think we need to, it's one motion, right? Because we don't have a choice. We have to provide both pieces of information.
Agreed. I completely agree. I wasn't seeing it as two.
But only if Chris agrees, because it's his motion.
I'm here. I think the motion to send the doc is one, and I view it as a separate for the leaning. Because I think it may be more, it may not be a clear A, B, C vote between the school committee.
Okay.
Personally, I agree with Paula that the full in-person and the full remote, I think are the stronger two options. And I say stronger in the sense of, in-person, I think, is clearly an educational preference, absent of the safety risks. And that is clearly the best way to educate all the kids. That's what we do traditionally. The expense side of it, I always think of it, you all know me, is concerning. But I think if we have a conviction that in-person is what we need to do, I have faith we will find the funding somehow. Either reconfiguring what we operationally do in school, going back to the towns and saying, this is what we're going to do. We need your support. Legislation, such as what we've gotten some funding from legislators already. And I think that the hybrid in the middle, as we're seeing, is the most complex one to digest. I think it's all the questions that come tonight, and I struggle with that one. So I think that the two motions are somewhat separate. Because I don't know if we're going to get a clear indication of which way the committee's leaning. But I think by default, we'll have to just select one. And it may be somewhere between hybrid and remote. I don't know.
Any other comments?
I guess, Madam Chair, I don't want a leaning necessarily to equate to effort in the sense that if we indicate we're leaning one way, I don't want all of the effort to try to figure out how to do those other two to drop. Do you know what I mean? Because we may need to pivot quickly, and the one that we indicate might be our favorite, lack of a better word, because none of these are favorites, may change.
Right. And Jill, I know you're shaking your head and you want to speak. And I completely agree with you, Leslie Ann. And I believe that the directive that we've been given on this effort is all three plans must be robust. It must be able to be triggered at any given time. So we absolutely, I'm getting thumbs up from Jill, we absolutely could not focus on one plan, one of the aspects of the plan, and not have the same level of focus and effort in the others. And I think from a public perspective, it's good that you said that, Leslie Ann.
Yeah, that's more kind of really why I said it, because I don't want people to walk away and think that our leaning is the way we're going. Because next week, it might be very different.
Okay.
Totally agree here, Chris.
So I guess the approach, if the committee would permit, is voting to approve the draft plan, the preliminary plan, and given an indication of whether you're supporting what's in the plan right now, which is leaning towards the hybrid model or if you're leaning towards a different model. And again, it's non-binding, and we're meeting next week as well to make more finalized decisions.
So, Madam Chair, I just think because it's my motion that's on the table to pick a leaning, I might withdraw my motion in favor of getting, you know, to allow Chris to present his and get it considered. And then if you wouldn't so mind, I might come back and make that motion again or table my motion and deal with his as first.
Okay, and Chris's motion is?
I'm going to have to withdraw my motion because mine's an amendment to his. So I withdraw my motion, and let's meet, if we can vote on the main motion, which is to submit, to give the authorization to the superintendent to submit the three plans.
As is.
As is. And then if you don't mind if I come back after, if I might make an immediate motion for the leaning. Thanks.
And submitting the plan as is has an indication in it of leaning towards hybrid? Because that's what's in the plan. True.
That's the way Jill's written it, yes.
Yes.
Well, and if that's the case, then I don't need a motion. I just need, we just need a straw poll after we're done with Chris's motion.
Okay. And is there any further comment on that? Okay, seen none.
Paula, can I have a question?
Sure.
So, and do you want to know which of the hybrid models we might be leaning toward? If we are leaning toward a hybrid model? Or are we not talking about that?
My feeling there is not going into that level of detail. All right, I'm going to start. Eric?
So am I voting yes or no on this? Or am I just telling you which way I'm leaning?
You're voting, if you vote yes, you're approving the preliminary plan the way it is drafted now and which incorporates the hybrid model as the, at this point, what we're leaning towards.
So my vote is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Laura?
Sorry, are you asking me to vote? Yes, I support it as written.
Okay. Ed?
I support it as written.
Thank you. Mike?
So Paula, is it for all three plans? Or are we choosing one?
Well, right now, we're voting to see if we support it as written to submit the preliminary plan. And in that preliminary plan, hybrid has been identified as where we're leaning right now. Non-binding.
Yes, then.
Chris?
Yes, agreed.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Gordon?
No, if we're not going to change the leaning.
Okay. And I'm a yes. So I believe we have a plan to submit to DESI. Do we want to do a straw poll of committee members to see what our feelings are beyond this? Do we need to, at this point, where we might fall out?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should have that discussion, especially, you know, clearly, there, you know, it wasn't a resounding yes. So I think it's important for us to know what people are thinking.
Yeah. I am going to ask, because of what time it is and the fact that we're meeting next week and everything is just so fluid, I'm going to take a straw poll now. Again, non-binding, it's a straw poll. It's 20 minutes of nine, and we still need an executive session. So I'm going to do a quick straw poll, and then I'm going to ask, if appropriate, for the committee to motion to go into executive session. So in the straw poll, Eric?
And can you clarify what we're voting for? That we're going to end the meeting and go into executive?
Well, right now, if the committee wants to try and get a feel for where we are, we just agreed to send the preliminary plan with a non-binding leaning towards hybrid.
Right.
If that's not really what you're feeling, where are you falling out? And you may be perfectly fine with hybrid.
I'm completely fine with hybrid. And I have a question after we're done with this.
Okay. Leslie Ann?
I'm leaning towards fully in-person. But if we had to go hybrid, I'd pick option one.
Okay. Laura?
I'm leaning towards hybrid, option one.
Okay. Ed?
Leaning towards remote.
Okay. Mike?
I'm leaning towards the remote with a slow roll into the hybrid.
Okay. Chris?
So my thought is the barbell. I think the hybrid is the most complex. I want to do 100% in-person. But I know as we go down that road, there may be some significant hurdles that prevent us from executing it.
Okay. Gordon?
If we can find the money for the busing, I'm in favor of going fully back.
Okay. And I guess, I kind of see, with every parent/student's choice to be able to go remote, I almost see, no matter what, you end up with a hybrid scenario in some fashion. I'm going to say, at this point, I'm okay with the hybrid the way it stands now. I need to kind of noodle on that a little bit more as well. But at least we all know sort of where we stand. Eric, you had a comment or a question?
Yes, thank you. There are quite a few questions that are remaining that folks have asked that we haven't addressed yet. And we could be here all night, I think, if we continue to do it. But is there going to be a mechanism? We obviously don't want people to inundate our administration with questions, because we're still trying to figure it out ourselves. But what sort of mechanism should we use? Or do we just say that folks are going to have to wait until our next meeting next week to ask remaining questions? What are your thoughts?
My thought is, and again, I know this is very difficult, and there's so many questions, you know, concerns from parents, et cetera, teachers. I'm going to, I'm going to say that I believe people need to join next week. In next week's presentation, information shared, a lot of questions that are on the table tonight may be answered without even having to be asked verbally or in the chat format. So there's so much at hand to do. I don't want to overwhelm or stress anybody involved in coming up with this plan, refining this plan any further than they already are. So as much as we'd love to answer everything, as you indicated, Eric, I think next week, we come back to the table and we hit more of these questions. We give further information, more updated information, and we go from there.
Paula, am I asking?
Gordon, you want to ask a question?
Yes.
Sure.
Will we be asking the yes/no survey question before our next meeting on whether or not the kids will take the bus and whether or not they will go to school if it's offered? Or will they only do remote? We were in the middle there with, we allowed people to say they didn't know. But if we have that commitment information for the next meeting, I think that that information should be available to the committee if it can be done in time.
Jill, Ryan, what are your thoughts there?
So our issue is, is that we, if we put the survey out, we don't know that we would have time to present. It would have to be a very simple survey, number one. Because right now, we have to have a comprehensive plan by Monday. We're not like other school districts who have until the 10th, because we need to start meeting with each school committee starting on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And Friday night, we have graduation. So that's a night off the table. So if we throw into this mix another survey, it takes away our focus from supporting and developing the comprehensive plan. We might be able to pull it off, but we ask for your understanding if this survey is... I think what we'd have to do is share the preliminary draft. And again, if people have not attended this meeting and we don't have the comprehensive draft, I think it's going to be very difficult for parents to understand what that would look like. And right now, we don't have a comprehensive plan to share with them, even in draft form, to get them to respond and commit. I think it would be premature to ask them to commit without the comprehensive plan. That's my main concern.
Yeah. Laura?
I just was wondering if it would be possible and/or appropriate to share the plan that we will be looking at next week publicly before this meeting? Just because then I think some people's questions might be answered prior to the meeting. I think there's a lot of really good questions. But I also think if people have access to the document, they could answer some of those questions themselves. Now, it may lead to more questions. So maybe that's, maybe that's a challenge. But just a question.
Yeah. Well, we did post it to the website before this evening's meeting. You know, I guess I'm not opposed to, after the school committee has a copy of it to look at, posting it to the school website for any other interested parties to begin looking at as well. Again, it may save, you know, some questions as well. Jill, are you okay with that?
Yes. If at that time you would like, we could send it out with that survey, because then they would at least have that information. But we would have to leave the survey open long enough to get data worthy of a presentation. And response rate can be low if we over-survey as well. I think it's an important survey. So I think it's likely that parents will participate. But nonetheless, I want to also be mindful of not surveying next week and then the week after that, and the week after that, because we'll get diminishing returns.
Right. But I guess if surveying next week is premature for a number of different reasons, are we thinking still of doing the survey? Because I agree with you. You're definitely going to get diminished returns as we continue to go.
So again, I can send it out as a, I can either post it or I can send it as a communication via Parent Square so that more people are likely to read it. I think, too, due to the nature of our district, we're going to be talking about similar things at other district meetings. So that information is going to be out there. So I would rather have people armed with accurate information as opposed to secondhand information. And yes, we'll probably have a lot of questions, but I think that's unavoidable. I think we all have a lot of questions. And it's our job to figure out the answers to those questions as quickly as possible so that we can have the most effective rollout as possible.
Well, I like your idea of putting it out there through Parent Square, because if that's more direct push rather than pull the information.
Yes. I have to emphasize that it is a draft and that it is subject to school committee approval. But I still think it's something that we could do. And hopefully, that will help parents to maybe review before our school committee meeting. And hopefully, that, that will help parents to maybe review before our school committee meeting.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Is the committee good with that? Okay. All righty, any other questions or comments? If not, I'm going to ask a member to give a motion to end this meeting and go into executive session, please.
So moved.
Second. All righty, I need a roll call. Eric?
Yes.
Laura?
Paula, Paula, we need to state the reason that we're going into executive session is for negotiation.
I'm sorry, so executive, whoever made the motion, could you? All right, I can say, and you can just re-motion.
I made the motion, Paula, this is Leslie Ann, but we also, do we want to indicate that we'll only return to general session to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, we need to put the reason out there still.
So that we, so we can discuss Silver Lake Regional negotiations.
Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Laura? Yes. Ed?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
I guess with Gordon's friendly amendment in the chat.
Yeah, so Silver Lake Education Association, Silver Lake Aid Employees Contract Negotiation Discussion, discussion pursuant to MGLC 30AS dot 21A3.
Right.
Gordon?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Okay, let's take a five-minute recess, folks, and see you in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Tonight, tonight was good, there was a lot of information, and I appreciate it from everybody.